One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Throw call.
Mayor Hasler?
Here.
Alderman Grumacher?
Here.
Alderman Mooney?
Here.
Alderman Donovan?
Here.
Alderman Jokers?
Here.
Alderman Hook? Alderman Stupi?
Here.
Alderman Prince?
Here.
Alderman Muzika?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Have a good chance to look at the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Mike set a record tonight.
First of all, I wanted to present an award tonight. As you all know, we've had our second flood in, within two years. And we, I wanted a certificate of appreciation to the group of volunteers that did our levee watch, that manned the levee. And this is the second time they've done that, or probably before that, but the one I knew about this time. So I asked Norm to be here, and we want to give him a certificate of appreciation for his, for the Ares, the Ares groups and the SERC. They did an outstanding job on that levee. I was really impressed. I got to spend some time with that group. Didn't get to meet and see all the volunteers, but I know there's a lot of people that did a lot of hard work, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, never missed a leg. So, Norm, could you come forward? Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And this is an expression of gratitude to the City of St. Genevieve, to the members of the St. Genevieve Amateur Radio Emergency Communications and County Emergency Response Team, and our local citizens who generously gave their time to assist with the communications and the levee patrols. I hereby present this certificate of appreciation to St. Genevieve's Ares and SERC and volunteers active during the April/May 2017 flood. The Ares communication-based volunteers were Norm Gallup, Howard Dohak, Tom Carroll, Susie Bynes, Danny Stefan, Jerry Stefan, Joan Mobley, William Mobley, Mona Brettsmacher, Alan Bauer, Al Ruder, Lori Robinson, and Mike Hogan. And I'd like for you to read the levee patrol volunteers from the city.
Our levee patrol volunteers, this is myself, Gina Bryant, Sandra Cabot, George Carroll, Brett Kavanaugh, Danny Devoon, Bob Eck, Mark Fowler, Cindy Grassi, Don Gestopson, Josh Hogan, Jim Holland, Roy Taylor, Anna Klainer, Bill Kramer, Dylan Lacy, Ed Latrell, Tim Maurice, Don Ritter, Sam Ritter, Joe Steger, Amanda Swent, John Summer, and Ben Thompson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Now, our staff reports, Gary, you're up first.
Oh, y'all, that'll be my report. Short and sweet. When it wasn't raining, when we were mowing. And when we wasn't mowing, we was fighting the flash floods.
We got, you know, a few other things done. We got the fountain in the park going. The rope had broke on the flagpole here at City Hall. So while we had it down, we redid all of it. Got the bathrooms open. Everything's up and going. We discovered a problem with a storm drain on Fourth Street during the flash floods and the heavy rain, and we're in the process of getting that remedied. Closed floodgates. Did a lot of storm drain jetting where we knew there were some problems and got that all open and going.
The pavement failure on Jefferson?
Yeah, on Jefferson, storm drain that goes under, there's a box covert that comes all the way from Fourth Street down to about halfway in the block, and it comes out from under a driveway. That had clogged under the driveway, which made the inlets up the street outlets, and all that water came down and buckled the pavement. Got in under it, the pavement was pretty thin there, and it was real sandy, like creek rock for fill. So we dug that out, put inch minus in, compacted it, poured concrete over it. Yeah, in a day's time, the pavement had dropped about eight inches, so.
Wow. It looked to me like up above it is starting to drop a little bit too, on that same stretch there.
Yeah, we're gonna do some asphalt repair there to seal everything up and...
Yeah, it looks good. The patch looks real good.
There was a lot of water.
Everywhere. Everywhere. There was, Third Street, that was the highest I've ever seen it. It had gone over the handrail. Usually the guardrail's going there, but it, well, your old house, it was halfway up the front yard because it backed up over the levee, yeah.
It's amazing, the water, the amount of water that came down Saturday night through Sunday. It was over, it was over eight inches of rain. You can see it. And I appreciate that. I know I got to visit with his crew out there. It was pouring down rain, and they were shutting floodgates. It was just like, what a day they had out there.
And we were pretty successful this year in getting them sealed, so.
The chairman of the levee district said that was the best effort on the staff on closing the floodgates that he's experienced since they've been built. So he was, he was very complimentary.
And I got a cure, I think, for the south when the next go around, so.
I think we need to recognize the street crew for that, because I know it was pouring down rain, and when I seen them up there, and they were, you know, and to hear other comments like that is a, a good job.
Had to get it done.
Our leader was right out there with them.
Yep. Thanks, Gary.
What about the stop signs? Are we putting in either a new type of stop sign?
Retro reflective, yeah. Everything that goes up now is new.
You can't even buy anything with that now.
Yeah, you can still get engineer grade, but they're more for construction sites or, you know. But, yeah, everything, all the signs we buy now are retro reflective.
Where are those two at?
We replaced one down at Seraphin in Maine and one up here at Fourth and Market. They, both of them got run over, so. And the one down there, it was, as the cops, instead of calling us out, two of them managed, it was wet enough to stick it back in the ground enough for it to stay up overnight, so it was a good effort on their part.
Yeah, helping out.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That it?
Thanks, man.
Anybody else? Thank you, Gary. Kenny's not able to be here tonight. He all have his report in front of you. Martin can probably answer any questions.
Or I can get to Kenny.
And the same way with Carla, she's, she was ill tonight, so her report's in front of you too.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I could answer any question about this.
What about the nuisance on one, on, uh, Nar Six? Has that been property over there cleaned up? So we had the, uh...
The Hook property?
The Hook property, we had the hearing on.
I haven't heard anything from Sam, and I think he would have let me know.
Yeah.
I know they kind of made amends between the two of them, and some things were said, and I think they're getting along better, but the problem's not the dad.
Right, right.
I had a couple, kind of related to this, more for Frank, I guess, than Carla, well, whatever. The Gait property on Main Street? If she ends up coming back to town and ends up, if, I know there's a warrant out, but we arrest her, what does, what happens?
Well, because it's been such a long time that we last looked at the property, we may need to do another nuisance hearing before the Board of Aldermen, so that the city would have the power to go in and abate whatever the nuisance conditions are. It'd be just like you didn't, what happened is, when you try to work with property owners, you kind of, you kind of give up your, your power to go in and do it yourself. And I'd have to work with, look at Carla, look at the last time we had a hearing, what the abatement order was, but probably it's, it's new problems, would be my guess. And we can...
Wonder if that's something we ought to talk about in closed session?
Well, actually, you don't, because you want to have a hearing where you don't know anything about it except the evidence that you hear from Carla. So we'd have to, I'll talk to Carla and Martin, and we'll, we may have to have another hearing.
I don't think the conditions that were present when we had the hearing have been remedied.
Well, some of them were temporary, like mowing grass and things like that. And I don't know from Carla and Martin exactly what the condition is, but it would be one of those deals where we publish in the newspaper, we can't find her, but we didn't find her the last time. So we had the hearing through posting and through the newspaper, and then the full board heard all the evidence, and then issued an abatement order and gave her a certain length of time. But I don't think you can just keep those, that length of time open. And that's been a while. It's probably been a year.
A year at least, a bit.
And I'm thinking the safest thing to protect the city, from the city attorney point of view, is to go ahead and have another one and just...
Probably get back on it before the grass gets out of control again.
I guess we have to assess that well at that time, what it is you want, what the city do.
You'll, you'll determine what the nuisance is and what it's going to take to abate, based on the evidence that Carla presents to you. And I think we can, we can videotape or take photographs from the adjoining property owner and put on pretty good evidence, and you can take a look at it and see which thing. It's been, it's an eyesore in that area of the city, but it's particularly an eyesore to the neighbors.
Well, it's a hazard to the neighbors. There's electric going to that building, and what's going to happen is, the condition of that, it could burn to the ground and burn everything around it, so.
Yeah, again, what I'd like you to do is schedule a hearing, listen to the evidence, and let the community know that you are aggressively going to have these hearings as needed. It's, there's, if we can't serve her, we can't do much with the court system. That's the bottom line. So, but I, but I can do something with nuisance abatement through your hearings.
That, you just, I guess, answered the second question, certainly led into it, was, if we can't, how long are we going to wait to do something? She may never come back, so.
She probably not going to come back.
The idea was, was, I guess, go ahead and have some more here.
Need to be proactive.
So I might want to schedule a special session, but you got to give, she's got to publish the notices, and on the first available day, once she can get a quorum, maybe have another nuisance hearing.
Over the years, we've asked citizens electric to cooperate with us in our code enforcement efforts. Their position has always been, as long as the citizen is paying their electric bill, they're not going to disconnect the electricity without a judge's order. This would be a case, I guess, where, and the municipal judge would be sufficient in their eyes, and not be a circuit court judge. But how do we get them?
Hey, you're not going to get that.
I mean, if part of the public nuisance is this safety risk that Mayor refers to...
Well, let's, let's deal with the evidence when you hear it. And I apologize that I'm cutting you off a little bit, but that's the right way to do it.
So is this not something that we can go in and have done and just bill or fart or apply a lien, or?
That's what we do.
After you've declared it a nuisance.
Right, we have to have that, go through that process before we can, just like we did with the Sixth.
Right. Sixth Street.
Yeah, because when you drive past it from the street, you know, other than an aging building, you know, but I don't know what's around back, I...
Yeah, that's where I think you'll be hearing most of your evidence about the back.
Okay, one more question. We, the Hotop property that we went in and did that after hearing and tore the building down, and if you remember, I think it's been about a year, I think that property was sold in a tax sale? And we've got a lien on the property? Isn't that waiting period like a year? Does, does our lien stay with that, or do we have to do something? Are we going to lose that right to that lien?
I think we got wiped out when they had the tax sale. The tax sale trumps all liens, above and below.
But don't, don't we have, isn't there a period of time where, there's not like a period of waiting year or something?
A tax sale is, is a powerful tool that the county has, and that way they get to sell a piece of property free and clear of all liens, which it would include above and below the county taxes. So we're probably out of luck on, on ever collecting on that lien.
Well, I consulted with the title company, and they don't necessarily agree, so I don't know.
No, I haven't talked to them. I have to...
Heck, because what Nick's referring to is, when something is sold as a tax sale, the original owner has an opportunity to come back and pay the taxes, but I don't know if a lien does.
Not unless you're a bidder, and we elected not to bid.
So, well, somebody will figure that out, right?
Yeah, I'll work with them.
And the assessor for the collector's position is that she's contracted with the city to collect real estate taxes, not special tax bills. So, because I, I asked her, when it went for sale on the, on the, the, the length of taxes, to collect it, that sale, that $11,000, and she said she didn't feel she had the authority to do that.
And I don't think she wants to assist that. That's, I didn't.
So should we have taken a position then to buy it, or bid on it, or?
Well, that would have been our opportunity to be a purchaser at the tax sale. We'd have probably, I don't know if we could have used our lien as currency to buy it, though that's the problem. If you can, then you've got to come up with $11,000, and then...
All we had to pay is the delinquent taxes.
Yes.
And we have a lien.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. All we had to pay is, I thought that's what the tax, taxes were...
Yeah, no, it was, it was only...
A few thousand?
Yeah, a few thousand dollars.
I always thought there was a period of time before they had a clear title to the property, but I, you, you sort of know more than...
There's a redemption period after the tax sale, the one year.
And then buyer has to go to court and get quiet title action, and they would have the right, if they satisfied all the requirements of notice, to wipe out our lien. Whoever bought it, I don't know who bought it.
I do, and he's aware of the lien, and we've talked about it, and he's, I said, you know, he should, if he decides to use the property for something other than making ground, he should come to this body and tell them what his plans are and see what kind of level of cooperation we can get on that lien, assuming it was a cloud of title.
Okay, thanks.
So? Any more questions? We'll go on with Martin's report.
I forgot to put him back on.
Oh.
The city attorney advised me that there have been a lot of changes in abandoned property laws of the state of Missouri, and we haven't reviewed our ordinances in light of those changes. He sent me a sample ordinance that kind of incorporates everything that, I think he got it from the Missouri Municipal League. But our ordinance kind of combines abandoned property and junk, and so we can't just take this out, put this in, without losing some of the wording that we probably consider desirable. So I'm kind of working it, how I incorporate this, and save the other, and come up with a proposal for you, and you should, and you should have it at your next meeting.
Let me comment on something that I've been working on for a couple of years with Martin and Pam. You know, we've got a, we've got a code book, and every year, the people that update your code send a little report out and say, look, here's some new laws that were adopted in this last session. You may want to have your city attorney look at it and see if you want to update your code. Our code book is behind on a lot of issues, and what I'm going to be doing, maybe in the next year, to meet with the mayor and Martin and Pam, is trying to identify some areas, including the abandoned car section, and try to get you current on as many as we can, but it's probably going to be a matter of a couple of years. I don't think you want to have 47 ordinances in one night, but it covers a wide range of things, including our liquor laws, some nuisance, but it just, it just needs to be done. And it, rather than react to, what we had is, we had an issue with an abandoned car. And when I looked at it, I realized that our ordinance didn't match the current statute, and I showed Martin a current one. We can fix that one, but you got a whole bunch of them that probably deserve to be addressed. And so you'll be seeing those come at you. I'll try to do, do it in a, in a fashion that you don't have, I, I think some of this stuff deserves deliberation, where you can talk about it, why, you know, why is this, it's like the ATV ordinance that you had. We'll present them to you in, hopefully in orderly fashion, and you can not get overwhelmed with it, but you're going to have more than, I would say, maybe 40 or 50.
Okay, I attended a couple of levee district meetings. Mark has done an excellent job of reporting out on those. If you've read the paper, what they did. Other than the, in reacting to the floodwaters, the big issue has to do with reimbursement from FEMA on the rock that they placed, and FEMA's saying that they're not going to pay for that. The mayor and John have attended a couple of the meetings, and the, because he thinks it's like one of the most important things that happens in the city, and I would just agree with that.
Well, when there's, when there's that much water on the other side of it, absolutely.
But the, basically, the dispute had to do with leaving the rock in place, being a permanent improvement. FEMA's charge is not to make payments for permanent improvements, but to compensate communities for their cost and damages as a result of the flood, and if you leave it there, then it's crossing the threshold for them. So I think the district, as recorded by Mark, has decided, considering the cost of removing it, they're better off just leaving it there and foregoing their, their compensation from FEMA. And that, I think that's what's going, that is what's going to happen.
Before you go on from that, just so you all know, is there any questions about that levee? I tell you what, I got a, I got a great education from, you know, in this flood. I spent a lot of time down there. And then I got, you guys can look at this over, the historic crest, I got this from Bob Mueller, and there's a trend here in 2000 where, with our gate down there on that levee, on our, that gate closes at 27, when it's on the Chester gauge, 27 feet, 27.5 feet, the gates in that, on the levee close. And when the gates close, water coming into the bowl, coming in on this side levee's got to be pumped. So there's a lot to go on with, and there's been a tremendous amount of times where that water's been over 27 feet in, in, in 2010. I mean, in, in the year 2000 already. You know, we've had two back to back. They're almost, they're not 100-year floods, they're calling them 96-years floods, but it's something we need to look at and be very mindful of, that it's, the trend is, seems like it's trending that way, you know, and it's, it's, it's important, and it's, a lot of things happen. You see all the wood going down these creeks, and it ends up, I got pictures of it, it ends up down there at the levee, you know, blocks the intakes and stuff like that.
That's the pumps, the pump houses.
The pump houses, yeah, it's just, what a mess it makes, you know, so. Just be mindful of that, you know, that it is important. You need to be, because people are going to ask questions, especially when water's running down there and it's not going anywhere, but there's a reason, because there's, there's some calculations go, if that, when the gates open, it's, when, when the river's just right and the gates are open, you can discharge a whole lot more water that way than those pumps can pump. So those guys calculate all that stuff and go, you know, if there's any questions of that. I think it's going to be more and more common that we're going to start seeing this. Hate to say that, then maybe it'll turn off. I don't know, it could go five years, and we don't have to worry about it, but...
I think there's some misconceptions in the community too about how the pump works and how you turn it on and how quickly the water will go. I think there's people in town that think if we flip the switch, then 10 minutes later, every creek's going to be empty in town.
Yeah, I've heard that comment too, and it doesn't work like they...
Yeah, that's not physics.
Also, I think some misunderstanding as to who manages the levee. And for the record, the city does not manage the levee. The levee district manages the levee. We provide space for them, we keep their records for them, we do a lot of things for them, but, but we don't make decisions for them. Those decisions are made by that board, it's independently elected, have their own source of revenue, and, and is responsible to the citizens as their constituents, the same way that you are responsible to your citizens. Continuing on flood discussions, we did not get a lot of phone calls from people with flooded basements, but that doesn't mean they didn't happen. And we are hearing kind of after the fact about a lot of incidents that have occurred where people, you know, battling with it. I got a call just today from somebody who's talking about the sewer backup. You know, when we get these complaints, I advise people, if they think that they've been damaged, that they should submit a claim for damages to us, which we'll turn into our insurance company. We generally know that the insurance company act, absent some act of negligence on the part of the city, that the, the insurance company will conclude, we're not liable. But citizens don't want to hear that from me. They need a higher authority, I guess, so we turn them in to the insurance company, and we get a response, and we'll inform the citizens as we get it. Clearly, this was an act of God and not a result of city, city negligence, but it's a persistent problem that at least some people would like to find a solution to.
Dick, you were talking about that, you know, so now's the time, because it's one of those issues, and I think it's gone, because we've had people say, well, nobody says anything because nothing's done. So what is our responsibility and stuff?
Well, you know, I, I only had one, and I heard of another one, but, you know, you think about it, it's, it's one of the nastiest and worst things that you, as a homeowner, that you could ever put up with, is have sewer backup in your basement. And to fix the problem, for us to fix the problem, is going to, to fix it right, is going to take millions and millions of dollars to do it that we don't have in the foreseeable future, we're not going to have. So I've kind of asked, what could we do on an individual basis, maybe, to take some of the capital improvement money? I know, you know, we talked about streets, but, and this would only be helping out some individuals, but maybe try to take some of that money, if there's a way we can individually help some of these people. I don't know how many there are, really, that, that have the issue, if there's, if there's 10, if there's 20, or whatever, but as the mayor said, and I certainly agree that these events are, are going to become more common as far as flash floods and water backing up and those kinds of things, these people are going to have to put up with this for a, a long time to come, and if there's a way we can do it, then, Martin's had discussions with, with Steve and Lyons and whatever, about maybe some solutions to these problems, maybe on an individual basis, that we can address some of these for people, because it's, it's not going to go away. And, you know, they, they obviously are taxpayers in the city, they do expect that, they hope that they buy...
Well, and sometimes the assumption is that, because we're a small town, or somehow our situation is unique. Having lived in St. Louis, I can tell you, it's not unique. I mean, I lived in St. Louis County, MSD is like 80 years behind in their sewer lines, because they keep adding subdivisions, things get built, water runoff changes, antiquated, you know, what, all the way down the list. And they'll tell you where we're going to get to that, but we can't tell you when. And they do have stop gaps, like you're talking about, there are backflow preventers and various things, but that's a mixed bag too, because it's like, it's like floodgates or whatever, and you stop it up here, and then it comes up over here, so...
And no one who's in the business encourages backflow prevention?
No.
Because they work a couple of times, and then they get dirty and stop working.
Yeah, you have to maintain them, and, and then you make enemies of your neighbors, because when you clog yours, when you stop yours, then it comes up next door. So it's, it's a slippery slope. I don't know what... I don't know what the easy, I don't think there is an easy answer.
Having managed three utility systems in my life, and in government, you know, our system is certainly not unique. I mean, in just St. Louis County, every system.
Everybody, that's what I'm saying.
The newest system isn't, is not going to be totally free from inflow and infiltration. It's just, with this going possibility, do it on a system of any size.
So how many properties do we have that are actually repeat?
Steve, do you have any idea? You want to come forward and, you've got more, you deal with this, because you're going out cleaning and checking sewer lines, so...
And the question was, how many properties do we have?
Yeah, roughly, how many properties? I mean, are they repeat, same ones all the time?
Well, that's the other issue. Some people find it to be the norm, and they just clean up, clean up when it goes away, and we never hear about it. Some people report it this time, but not next time. So an accurate number, I couldn't give you.
I mean, in a particular area?
What's that?
An order of magnitude, is it ten or is it a hundred?
I would say, if we found them all, less than fifty, fifties.
So is it all in one area?
In the lower-lying areas, next to, next to the creeks, of course. Of course, water's going to go, collect there at the most. And I'd say, put the number at fifty to be high, because when you stop flow from going into someone else's basement, that relieves pressure. So in a sense, like he said, it is going to leave it in the system, and it's going to back up further.
One of the things that is served going unsaid, is that a lot of property owners can purchase insurance for the repair, but it's still an awful experience to have to deal with the repair of a sewer flooded basement. But the economic cost of that is something that can be insured. A lot of people elect not to buy that. It's an additional coverage on your insurance. But I kind of, I kind of think sometimes that people shop for the cheapest insurance, and that's one that's fairly easy to ignore. But as a city, we should encourage people to talk to their insurance agent and see what that would cost, because it may be that if you've got a lot of nice stuff in your basement, that there's no way that the city could be a guarantor to repair somebody's pool table, or antiques, or whatever the case may be. And we can go in and make sure that we can help it drain, but the cost of that coverage, as I understand it, is not that much. If you're on the high end of the town like I am, I don't bother with it, but I think I have it anyway, just in case, just in case I have a backup. I don't just, I just don't have a lot of valuables in my basement.
Well, but they don't, that insurance, you know, if you have a persistent leak, it ends up doing damage, but took place over time, unless you would have added that coverage, you don't get paid, you don't get compensated for that either.
But people really ought to be encouraged to talk to their agent about pricing that, instead of just buying the least expensive insurance they can buy. I mean, that's optional, and it's available readily.
Is that something we can do as a city, just send out notices to these people? I mean, some of these people may not know.
It's what you're doing right now on TV.
We're going to find out how many sewers we've got back up. But that's okay, because we need to know. You know, you don't need to hide that it's a problem, and how can we help, how can we help?
I think it would be better if we notified them ahead of time, if we have repeat problems and stuff, notify them that they need to check into their own insurance, you know, that it's not really a city liability, you know, but just as an informational tool to them to protect themselves.
And I guess the mayor's point, the ex-mayor's point, even though we may not have a legal responsibility, is this, is a matter of policy, something that the board would like to pursue. And the answer is a grinder pump, but whatever house you want to protect, and you know, that's five thousand, seven thousand dollars.
About seven thousand dollars. And I'm not...
Per solution.
That's a what? That's a pump that...
It's a tank you put in your house, your sewer goes into it, and it's got a pump in it that grinds up the solids and pushes it into the line. It's normally used when you're in a low spot, and you have to get up to the sewer line. In this case, these people have flow, positive flow, but it has a check valve in it, so nothing can come back. And that's the advantage of it.
And also, some of them act as somewhat of an accumulator, because it's a pretty good reservoir there.
Thirty gallons.
Yeah.
Almost the whole, most of the city of St. Mary's is on grinder pumps.
Pretty much all of the city of St. Mary's.
All, because the whole system's pressurized, isn't it?
But the thing about the grinder pump is it's always exercising that valve, so the valve stays clean.
And that's in the house? It's in somebody's house?
No, no, it's out in your yard.
Out in your yard, yeah.
And Mike, if that worked, maybe, you know, maybe go out there and say to people, a one-time thing, and it's yours then, and may, and again, not, who knows? Again, I think it'd depend on the quantity, and who might be interested, and not just give them away, but maybe we certainly participate in it, and it would at least maybe alleviate their problem for years, anyway.
Yeah, and I've started, I've started tracking the basement backup locations on the GIS system. Nothing from the past, but the current stuff. So we'll be able to see if there's a trend in any areas, which houses are affected, and which ones have never been affected.
So whether we can do anything to help them financially, they should let us know, so that we can put that into the system.
Who pays for them in St. Mary's?
I don't have any idea.
No, remember, that was ten, fifteen years ago?
I know, I know the employees of the city of St. Mary's still have to maintain each one.
The Department of Agriculture has had loan programs available for these grinder pump installations for many years, and smaller, for smaller communities, rural communities. So it probably, I'm just guessing, is one of those USDA loans, but they didn't pay that through their sewer rates.
And I know you're maybe checking some other, maybe there's some other options, too, that may or may not work out, so have to play with those, so...
We're always keeping an eye out for different things.
Great.
Okay. In other flood news, a couple of all of us were contacted by a lady who lives in a house that she's owned for a while, but hasn't lived in full-time. She was working in the city, had an apartment, and come down here on weekends, and she retired, and now she's down here full-time, and her basement had water in it, which she acknowledges was stormwater, not sewer backup. But the issue is, all of the water that was coming off of Lynn at the High Point, down the hill towards St. Mary's, and just was inundating her basement. And she took it upon herself to dig some diversion trenches just by hand. I was impressed with the effort she put in, she put in. But, you know, that gets, the four-inch ditch got overwhelmed pretty fast. And she wasn't blaming us, she was asking if there's some way we could help her be part of the solution. I told her I would bring it to your attention. I don't, I don't know exactly how you would design something that would divert the water away from her house, and the next-door neighbor's house was also affected.
Do we have an exact location? Did anybody go out and look?
Yeah, I went out.
Okay. I mean, because I seen the water running across St. Mary's Road, pretty, I thought it was a water leak, but it was probably that same water coming off the hill all the way down through that property.
Again, without engineering design, I wouldn't just start building something, but I can envision a berm at the top of the hill that diverts the water into some channels that are then maintained, but that causes a whole nother issue, because when you take sheet flow, and you concentrate it in one place, you better figure out what the force of that water being directed to that single place is going to do.
Wherever it lands, it's going to do damage.
Yeah. So it's just not, it's not a simple solution, and it is, but it's not exactly a localized problem, because we have similar issues with the water that comes off of Jefferson down to Market, and the houses that are on Market, but behind Bosler's.
Right.
Old funeral home.
Right.
Similar kind of situation, for which there's no easy, cheap solution.
So this one on St. Mary's Road and stuff, whose property is it up the hill from? Is it her property?
Her property, and the property owners that front on Lynn Drive.
Yeah, because Lynn Drive dead ends, you know, at the top of that hill, and then it's just a big, it's just, it is what it is.
No, she's actually further up than that. She's further north than that.
Right.
But she owns, her property's large, I mean, it goes way up the hill.
But I mean, isn't that something, though, that's her responsibility?
Well, yeah.
That's why I was wondering, is if it was somebody else's property further up the hill, then it's somebody else's property.
And she's not saying it isn't her responsibility, she's just asking if...
If there's anything we can do.
We prescribe a solution for, or design a solution for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and that, and when I spoke with her, too, and I said, you know, that was an extraordinary rainfall. I mean, you don't normally get that much rain in that short a period of time. So it's an unfortunate thing, it's terrible, but I think there were a lot of people that had water in places that they didn't normally have it. So it doesn't diminish from the grief she's going through, but, you know. So if we were going to entertain the idea of doing something that, how would we even start? I mean, what would we do?
Employ an engineer who does hydraulic calculations, and figure out how much water comes off of it, and design the berm that will catch it, and the discharge structure that diverts it around the houses, and hope it works. But it's, you know, again, it's private property, we don't generally make improvements on private property. While we might assist her in finding out what the solution is, I don't think the solution, I think the cost of the solution exceeds the value of the real estate.
Right. While we're on this, I know we've had the, I believe we've had discussions in the board before, and again, this is going to happen more often, and we went out and rented the pump to get the water off of Second Street. I think we ought, we've talked about it, and I think you've even got pricing on buying the pump. I think we ought to really look at doing that. We could react, and of course, this was on a weekend, and it was, I think, Monday, right, Gary, before you got to being able to pump that? We could probably react a lot quicker if we had it, and could use it for, if we needed it for other things, too. It was about twenty thousand dollars, something like that? Was it about twenty thousand?
Yeah, eighteen and some change. That was a year and a half ago.
What was this at on Second Street?
Well, just with Washington and Second, or small ponds up there.
Third Street.
How long did that take you to get rid of it?
Oh, about eighteen hours.
I think a lot of it, though, is as the creek went down, it started draining itself. I think a big problem there, though, if I went and talked to, I was down there with those guys on that street, that whole ditch line is just full. And I think that there was a pipe, there's a pipe that goes through and underneath the levee, and it's kind of, it's like a siphon, I guess, when that water's coming by, but I guarantee you that it's probably clogged up, and it prevented a lot of that flow. Now, I don't know if it would have stopped that, but it did eventually drain itself out. It was, I would say that pipe, as the creek went down, it, the pipe, and when I worked, and I talked to all those homeowners in there, and we're going to get a group of volunteers, because they all want to clean the ditch out.
Whose ditch is that? Is that on private property?
It's on, there's several people on there, there's a guy on the corner named Randy and his nephew, and then Donnie Wolk, he's the one that called me on Sunday about the pump, and that's, I didn't know we ever did that, but that's okay, you know, found out that, and then Gary did that, but...
Is that the, basically, the ditch that's behind the old blacksmiths and all that?
Yeah, yeah, it just makes a, goes up from the street, and then...
Yeah, behind the dog.
Right, right. That's, I was just...
Yeah, that's not near as deep as it used to.
It's not, it's not big.
No, it's not big.
And it's full of, it's overgrown.
I'm sure it's picked up a lot of stuff over time. It probably was deeper at one point, yeah.
So is that a, is that a directive for me to take bids, get bids on the pump?
I think so.
Okay.
Keep in mind, and keep in mind with equipment, if it's not maintained, and you're going to have, if you leave a pump sit for a while...
You've got to exercise it.
Where'd you get a pump from, Gary?
Where'd I get it, equipment from?
How much did it cost us to rent it for that week?
Eleven hundred dollars. About eleven hundred dollars. At least under eleven, I think it was.
But, and we can, that's a good solution, except you're relying on them having a pump when you need it.
Right.
And when there's a crisis, everybody wants a pump. Joe, you have something?
Well, I mean, what was your, how many times have you needed one, or what, I mean, is it worth having one sit?
I've been here six years, that's the second time that I've...
What's your opinion on it? You're the one that's going to be dealing with it, so...
I really don't know. I mean, I think what we did with the piping is going to be a big cure for that. I mean, it proved up to that last heavy rain that it worked, because at no given time, there was no more than six inches of water on Washington. You know, through all the other downpours up to the last one, I think it was clogged up. But what keeps it from happening any other time? As much trash as we pick up in the storm drains, and, you know, anything can clog it up, and be back in the same spot, so...
There's also about three or four times a year that we know that we have to rent those pumps as well. So it would benefit us as well.
Now, that makes it more sensible, right?
Yeah, if there's more of a call for it.
Because you're right, pump setting is...
Well, I just, I know what it, sort of seals and everything else.
The seals dry up.
Yeah. I mean, we can maintain it, don't, you know, and then when it's broke, it's ours to get fixed, and it's nice to have, but I would, as long as it's, I'm not, I'm not in favor of buying something that we use two times every week. Like, with the water, we can be more regular, I don't know, who's going to, who knows?
Right.
We've actually got a pump down our wastewater plant, very similar to what we rented, and we're on a two-month rental of that right now, due to the equipment break down. We'll still have it about another month.
So you need a motion to...
No, I'll just do it, and I'll bring you, you have approved purchase, because it's over the five thousand dollar limit.
Okay.
Okay. At a meeting with Chief Steiger, former Chief Schwinn, the representative from Sentinel Equipment, the, one of the local people who were signed up with the HGAC by, which you authorized me to join at the last meeting, I was in attendance, and we had a conference call with a buying cooperative to find out kind of what the procedure is. One of the questions you asked was, what does it cost us? Didn't cost us anything. They charged a fee to the seller, which we obviously pay, because it's the ultimate price of the firm, but we're not out of pocket, and they definitely buy something. And so we will be placing our order through them, and we'll get the response through them. I observed, and maybe you have observed, that Gary has initiated some new policies with regard to transporting city equipment around the city. So it'll be a fairly unique, but not unusual experience to drive a moor down the city streets now. We're trailing them, and when they take one on the street, they also leave a truck at the job site where they're working, so they don't have to use the moor for transportation when they come back for lunch, and that kind of thing. So he's got a good handle on that, and has instituted some policies to solve a problem that I know has been observed in the past. We signed our agreement with the, I signed the agreement with the St. Genevieve Memorial Hospital for Occupational Medicine for the drug screening today. We sent out notices in our payroll checks to all the employees, and this is being initiated. And we're going to be in a group of our own. She said we're going to do that, or get in a group with twenty other companies, and I asked her what the probability of having a screening actually happen, and she said, well, you know, it might go a year or two. And I said, well, I don't think we want to do that. So we're, we're going to be our own group, it's going to be quarterly.
What percentage are the...
Ten percent.
Ten percent, okay. And how many employees do we have? We're doing the, okay.
We're doing employees, you ship the list off to them.
Seventeen people.
So ten percent of... So ten percent of order will be tested.
And, yeah, I had a conversation with the chairman of the Special Road District about Chadwell Lane. I was telling him that the engineering quote I got was exorbitant, in my opinion, and I was reluctant to proceed with that, so he's checking on getting the engineers that they work with to do some of that design work, and we'll have further conversations.
I went to their meeting Tuesday, and they're ready to jump, you know, they're waiting on that with sixty-one up there, they wanna help, you know, so, but they're, this engineering is the, is the holdup right there.
And finally, in my travels, I had the opportunity to go by Jason Smith's office. I know, just overheard the mayor and the ex-mayor talking about, former mayor, I'm sorry, meeting with Jason Smith's staff over the National Park Service. I had a meeting with the congressman and his DC staff person about it, they're ready to go. The problem is, it was explained to me, is that the person who was handling it in Blunt's office, her name was Down, is Downing, she went to work for the Interior Department, and kind of took her institutional knowledge with her, and so the staff person that replaced her is now trying to get up to speed on all of the things that she was doing, including this. And, and they're kind of waiting for that to happen. I asked her, you know, how long is that gonna take, and asked the staff, the congressman's staff person, and she, well, I don't really know, is it what's gonna happen this year? Oh, yeah, absolutely, it'll happen this year, although she didn't have the time. And, so that's the input that I received, I hope when you meet with the staff.
I wanted to let y'all know tomorrow, I got an invite from the Bolducats to do a tour. Well, now they tell me there's Tim Good that's gonna be there from the National Park, and that's tomorrow at four o'clock, anybody wants to come? I was just going for a tour from, what's his name, is it...
Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff, and now this is kind of involved, this man is, Tim's gonna be there, and I gotta, I went and spent a little time with, to bring myself up to speed with Bob Mueller on the history of this National Park deal, and that guy loves to talk about it, and he can educate you very well on it, and he's gonna be there, and Sandra, you're gonna be there, and any of you that wanna come, find out more about it, you know, that National Park, because it's, I think it's really important for our city, you know?
Okay, next conclusion, I'm recording.
Just thinking, though, you said we're gonna test ten percent of the people every quarter? So like, that's like...
Just like one quarter?
Yeah, less than, less than two.
Well, one point seven people a quarter, but from four quarters, you're gonna test seven people a year? Out of the seventeen?
No, I think we'll get one person tested every quarter.
Okay. So four?
Four.
Okay. So four, four...
Four a year.
Four a year, okay. I was gonna say, it seemed like, seemed like a lot to have a little cap of them.
Ten percent, seventeen people.
Yeah.
It could be, it is.
And that doesn't, we still have the, the opportunity, in case we suspect someone's under the influence, reasonable, reasonable cause of sending that, so...
And in this policy, you have, what happens to this individual that tests positive?
Our policy says it can be caused for immediate dismissal, meaning sure that will be up to the board.
Okay. Is that it? Any questions? Maybe reports, I want a report, you know, on that, back to that levy committee. I know that hasn't, doesn't have anything to do with, with the city, other than it protects our city, but I felt really led to have John, he's gonna go to their meetings, I'm Mark, and he's been going to the meetings, and, because it is important, and we're not, we're just gonna observe, and if we have any questions, citizens have questions, we'll have a voice, you know, just to ask, and they're pretty good about that, too, so... Encourage you, it's just, I think it's gonna be good for all of us.
So where does the levy district start then, when it comes to the Marina Road?
The Marina Road is in the Levy District now.
It goes through the, the Marina Road bisects the levy there.
So who maintains the Marina Road?
Well, it's private property.
The whole Marina Road?
Yeah, and outside of the city limits.
Now, the pump station discharges into the old creek that was the waterway for the marina. And since it's not being maintained for marina purposes, it silts in. So, they think, the Levy District Board thinks that it's a design flaw, that the corps' design should have not have relied on some other means of getting the water to the river, you know, relying on somebody else's maintenance of the water channel, and, but that's history now. They, they periodically say, you know, the corps needs to come back down. And, and that obviously hasn't happened, and the likelihood of it happening depending on corps getting funding to do something other than what's already done, which we know is not highly probable.
Just, I wanna bring this up, you know, before we get away from, just talk a little, we'll talk about it a little later, but it's brought to my attention, on Riverview and White Sands Road, there's a big tower that goes, that's, needs to come down, because it's, it's served its purpose, Norm, you looked at it, it's, he's afraid to climb it, and he's climbed a lot of towers, so, and I understand, it's, I was told it's a, it's an issue for us, now I don't know if anybody knows anything about the tower, they said it's been supposed to come down for a couple of years, everybody that I've talked to.
We declared it surplus property, because the, the then Fair Board asked us, they could take it down. So we said, we declared it surplus, and then they decided not to do it.
Well, we got a tower up there that's, I don't know how tall that tower is, I imagine it's at least two hundred...
Hundred fifty feet.
Hundred fifty feet?
Yeah.
And I'd rather get it taken down than for it to fall down on something or someone, so...
What was it originally used for, again?
For the city's radio communication.
The radio tower?
They went by the water plant.
Yeah, it's up by the water tower.
And I checked around at that time to see if anybody had any interest in it, in its use, or wanted to own it, or... Did nobody have any?
Well, Norm would like to have a hundred foot of it.
I would love to have a hundred foot of it.
Take the bottom hundred feet, wouldn't you?
But us, being a voluntary organization, we don't have the funding to take it down, so...
How about the knowledge?
I've got the knowledge.
Well, the first thing somebody's gonna have to do is go in there and get the trees out from around it, because it's grow, the trees have grown up around it, and it goes up, it's not gonna go anywhere with the trees, so the trees have to go.
And I'm entirely sure if you take the trees out, it won't fall down and all that, so...
No, I think it'll stand up.
No, it is temporarily safe on that aspect, where you've got a, just a, I think there's a hand, just a handful of guy wires still holding it up, but they're in bad shape.
Well, in consideration of the possible gift of a hundred feet of it, would you advise us on the cost of getting it taken down, and we can...
Yeah, I can look around.
If you can do it?
I had talked to Felix, and he did have a guy go up and look at it this week.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he's looked at it, other option is, I think, get construction to come in with a crane and hook up to it and drop it, or the other option is to push it down, drop...
You can, can do a controlled drop.
A controlled drop.
That would probably be the most cost-effective way of doing it.
Is it the safest way?
And then dismantle it once it's laying down?
Yeah, once it's laying down, dismantle it and scrap it, or...
Yeah.
Doing it that way, we'd save money, but we're gonna lose it, if Norm was wanting to put up a hundred foot, it'd probably destroy the whole thing.
Yeah, and once it's dropped, the structural integrity is gone.
Yeah. Well, it's our item, we continue to pursue some ideas and costs to get the thing taken down.
I think we, we need to do something with it before we have an accident, and then it's a bigger problem.
Right. Or somebody's head.
Okay, that's all I have, anybody anything else?
I wonder if the company did my way, the nursing home would have equipment. Maybe they could take that on while they're there. I'll call, I'll call, I'll get their number, call them.
And, committee reports?
Yeah.
What's the chief, the chief guy, is he gonna...
I thought he was gonna say so.
Say so.
I thought he was gonna get here.
Are you talking, Gary?
No, we're taking out the tower back here.
Very good.
Problem solved.
Okay. Public comments. Okay, in front of you will have the agenda of the last meeting, minutes, I'm sorry.
Move approval.
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
You wanna oppose? Now we have a resolution authorizing fourteen Scott Air Packs SCBA's being declared surplus property.
Move approval.
Second.
Headed in, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Just a question on what, what do we do with them then? Are they sellable, would anybody have interest in them?
I thought they were gonna donate them to the Zell.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, so they're still usable, some...
Yeah, we got, we got new ones, and these are the ones that are being replaced by the grants, and we're gonna hand them down.
I didn't know if we were just destroying them, or if there was a use for them.
Yeah, kind of.
Well, that's good.
Might be using.
Yeah, that's right.
Old business? New business? Now we're gonna have other business. Approval of the following annual liquor license due July first, 2017. I got one question, and I don't know if anybody can answer, we got that SP Sandbar LLC at 299 Merchant Street, and then Downtown Sandbar at 299 Merchant Street.
That's my type of, one, there's not two of them, it's the, downtown.
Yeah, the downtown's right here on the corner, 299, right here.
Oh, yeah.
And on the first column, the third one, fourth one then?
I think it's the St. Gene Sandbar LLC now.
Okay. So it's just one?
It's just one.
Okay.
I, the one was on there from last year, and I added the new one to it, so, yeah, it's just one. We don't have two of them.
Oh.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, yeah. So, chief, were any of these a concern to you, or?
Oh, we chose.
Okay, that was gonna be my question. You're going faster than...
I know.
Make motion approve? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Maybe I shouldn't have done that, since my name's on there. You all right with that?
He makes the motion for every liquor license except the Ours and the Cero, somebody else can...
I will move to approve the Ours Ceros liquor license.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Should I abstain from that? Should I abstain from that?
We move on to Catholic Rusing, Chair of the 2017 French Heritage Festival, is requesting a street closure for June tenth, 2017.
Hi, you've tuned in, hi.
Hi, there you are.
I have not met you yet, nice to meet you.
Well, hi, good to meet you.
Um, yes, we, every year we request that merchant brew all the way down to Washington for an hour and a half, from ten thirty to twelve, on the day of the French Festival, because our opening ceremony begins behind the church, and then we parade, and it just takes time, you know, and people, hopefully we have more and more, this is the twentieth year of the French Festival, so please, everybody, come.
Is that a Saturday?
Saturday, June the tenth, and we have so many more activities this year. People are just coming out of the woodwork and wanna join us, and so it's really gonna be exciting, food and whatever, and we'll have Dennis Drum at the evening, as we always do with the dancing, but we just need to have the approval to get that street closed, because people start gathering along Merchant, a half hour before the opening at eleven, and then from twelve. It's a every-year thing, there's nothing different, just wanted to say that, you know, it's the twentieth year, it's exciting, so...
When does it start?
At the eleven o'clock, at eleven, at the back of the church, at the front of the church or the back of the church, I don't know, yeah, it's really the front, everybody says it's the back. It overlooks the square, is where we have our opening ceremony. And then we leave from there, and we parade down Merchant Down, through the north end of Main Street, because then we have activities also throughout that area, throughout the day.
Motion to approve, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then we have the St. Gene Downtown Renewal is requesting a temporary liquor license for Saturday, June tenth, 2017, at the Lions Corner.
Move approval.
Same thing.
Same thing, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any communications with the aldermen, myself?
Did anybody get any thing about the UTV side-by-side stuff, I've been...
Somebody asked me about it the other day, where do we stand with that?
We're gonna do a work session or something.
Joe, when you talk about that, Joe's all over this. Community leader, Joe.
It was my understanding that there was nothing wrong with the last proposal, other than the wording for ATV needed to be taken out, the UTV part of it was okay, and we were just waiting for it to be represented to us.
There you are. You got something to say, Chuck?
Nothing about that, I mean, I'm...
But you're slowing up.
I am.
You have a proposal?
I, well, I understood that.
I, I don't think...
Frank and I were going to use this file of information.
Yeah.
I knew there was something.
Sajid.
I, I understood that you were gonna have a work session.
That's what I, that's what I thought, too. We were gonna do that.
Okay.
I dropped the ball on that.
Next meeting, we'll have a work session, before or after the regular meeting?
Preferably, for me, after.
That's a, can we bring that, can I talk about that before we get too... We move this meeting at least a half hour back to six o'clock.
I've had a lot of people request it, because they can't get here by five thirty.
We're gonna have people coming in for, with public comments, what that would do also is, even if we went, I'd like to see it go to six thirty, that way, if you wanna do a work session, you could come in at five thirty, do that, have your meeting, I think it's, with meetings, as many meetings that go on in this town, it's hard to get together, and I don't, I know we, the board, I talked to Pam about this, we have to do something to make that change, what are you guys' thoughts on that?
Six thirty's gonna make it tough for me on those Thursday evenings that the municipal band performs. I think I could probably get away with six o'clock, and still make it to where I need to be to conduct the band, but...
I mean, let's try, and then...
Let's try.
Six o'clock is actually better for me than five thirty, but...
We could always move the, the public comments to later in the meeting as well, couldn't we do that?
We can do that, I, they're...
One of the reasons I think we moved them, so people could, if people had something to talk about before you voted on something, was the reason we switched it around to the front part of the meeting.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah, require the ordinance, change it.
Oh, okay.
So we gotta do a query for it.
Okay. So we're gonna do it at six o'clock, we'll change it to six? Is that okay with everybody?
I'm game.
I'll have it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
What about our work session, after the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You have the floor, sir.
We were contacted by contractors, citizens today, that are going to be doing some utility work on Fourth Street next Tuesday, and have requested the street closure between Fourth, or I'm sorry, between Market and Jefferson?
Merchant.
Merchant.
What time, you know?
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, he said he's gonna start at nine, and he hopes to be done in four hours, but it could take longer, depending if they run into any issues.
So, I just wanted to make you guys aware, um...
They're replacing the utility pill there.
On Fourth, between...
In front of the church, essentially.
Right.
The front of the church, or the back of the church, the opposite side of the stairs.
Between Market and Jefferson?
Between Merchant, Merchant and...
Merchant and Market.
Oh, just that one block?
Yes.
On Ford.
Correct.
And what day is that gonna be?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, are there gonna be cars in the way, or are they gonna block us?
We'll, we'll put up some no parking the night before, to keep, keep anybody from, from getting in there, but I think more, more than anything, is just the through traffic that, that will be cumbersome, but we'll, we'll put those no parking signs out Monday night.
Charging perspective?
Yes.
I was gonna say, that'll be...
Free admission, we'll charge it to leave.
Charging to leave.
Yeah.
I don't want to prolong this anymore, but, Dick, you have... I didn't want to prolong this anymore, but Dick, you had something about a garden over here with the...
Yeah, and I probably need to work out a few more details before I really bring that up.
Okay, all right. Now we're gonna, we, that's all we have for this meeting, but I wanna go into, we need to go into close session, so...
Need a motion?
I'm motioning.
I'm making a motion, going to close session.
Second.
For what?
You have to, it's either contract personnel or litigation.
Litigation. There you go, there you go.
Okay, Alderman Grimmerchur?
Yes.
Alderman Moon?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?